Well, I thought she was coming. She said that she would be joining us today.
All right, uh, we have no minutes, unfortunately, so next meeting, Tom promises three sets of minutes?
At least two.
The mayor is, is she coming?
Yes.
Let's talk about, there's no members of the public here, so, um, annual tax classification. I talked to Peter Davies today, and our new temporary assessor isn't quite ready. They're working on it, they'll have it for the next finance meeting. And I'm gonna set a public hearing for the tax classification for the first meeting in November, I think. Um, is it November? Yeah. Yes, first meeting in November, that's what they wanted done, all right? So we don't have that. Let's talk about the 281. Hadal, you're just in time. Where are you? I thought I saw her come in. I admit it. There she is. Hi, Hadal, can you hear me?
Yes, I can. How you doing? Hi.
Good. We're gonna start with 281 for the, uh, old bill, auto insurance. This is an old bill, we have to pay it. You wanna say anything about it?
Um, sorry.
An old bill and we have to pay it?
It's a prior fiscal year bill. No, this has to do with, um, uh, this has to do with, um, with Emily. Um, she, I guess, what, the story around this was, um, the insurance company had an audit, and when the audit took place, uh, they found out that they did not charge us by $281. And because it's, it comes from the appropriation for, uh, from appropriation, which is the budget for prior fiscal year, that's why it is in front of city council for an approval as per the Mass General Law.
Okay. All right. Any questions? We got a pair of bills. Tom, anything?
No, please.
Connie, anything?
No, it makes sense.
Omar? JP, anybody? Okay. Uh, I'll take a motion to approve 281 dollars from the Reserve Fund to the insurance prior fiscal year bills.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Riss says aye. Three to zero. Next one, Mr. Bag. I'm gonna share the screen with his... Give me a second. This is the budget you proposed. Go for it, Jeff. Tell, the CPA approved this extra money, uh, for the Mounton North project unanimously. So Jeff, you could explain to the council the same thing you explained to us why it happened.
Sure, thank you. Um, and the request is for $65,202 from CPA. Um, the project is an overwhelming success. Um, we're basically in the punch list period of time where the project's coming to completion. But there were really two primary issues that we encountered. One was, um, supply chain issues. Uh, it was like, a lot of the wood fencing, uh, was the particular item that just did not come, and the contractor was trying and trying. And what that did is, um, it made us miss our June 30th completion date. And so, the park program is actually pretty rigid. Park program's been great to the city, and so it's not a complaint, but they're pretty rigid. So, we didn't get to spend all the money before June 30th. And that reduced the amount that we're eligible to get back from them. So that created a gap of about $38,000 that we, uh, we couldn't value engineer the stuff out of the project. It's really essential, there's a privacy fence, there's a guardrail, there's a fence inside the project. So, we really have a choice. So we're recouping that cost so that we can paper, paper, pay the contractor out. Uh, the project was, other than that, the project was only about $5,000 over the budget, so we're asking for that to be covered. Um, a minor change order for paving, and then, we are, uh, asking the contractor to add one more drainage basin up at the top of the hill. So we built this trail at the top of the hill. Through the project, we found that there's an area of runoff that we wanna fix now. And we think it'll make the project much more sustainable in the future. So that's a $14,000 change order. It's a miscellaneous expenses of $1,000. And then, we're trying to build in $5,000 for the Parks Department to have available over the coming year as we, you know, especially in springtime or next summer, if there's any storms or things like that, that money will be directly available to Parks for that. And I do, I would put a plug in for the Parks Director. You know, he will be back to kinda create a line item in his budget for future maintenance of the park, but we're not quite there yet, so it's just kind of a interim step.
Can you tell me, I forgot to ask this. Why the deadline of June 30th? Is that a sufficient deadline? Doesn't sound like they gave you enough time, 'cause we lost 38... If I understood you right, we lost $38,000 from the park grant because they had a deadline. Spend it all by June 30th. That's what you said, correct?
Yeah. I mean, we under, I guess, it was, it's a little bit of a learning process. We understood that we were under contract, we had about a year. But, we were in communication with the Parks, the Park Grant Administrator and told her that we were having this supply chain issues, and she said, "Okay." And they still let me know. And it wasn't until it was too late to know that that actually meant that we weren't gonna be able to access that, that money for reimbursement, so...
They wouldn't let you ask for an extension, given the whole country's having supply chain issue?
No. We asked two different ways and, uh, two different times, and they said, "No, sorry." So there's no contract extension available.
Well, that explains it. Okay. Any questions from, I mean, and we went over this in the CPA. Obviously, this is a beautiful park, so we'd love to, we have to pay for it, finish paying for it. Anybody have any questions on this?
I see that JP, Counselor Riss, can I ask?
Go ahead, I don't have... Go ahead, JP.
Honored, yeah, Jeff, I just added, I think, one question. And, I think the project is absolutely gorgeous, it fits in very nicely, and it sounded like you had obliga, well, you know, we have obligations to certain neighbors to do certain things, to create a sense of, of privacy, both for the neighbors and for the users of the park, if I'm not mistaken. But, and, and part of it is a fence, and I presume it's like a stockade fence, but aren't there other types of fencing available and other suppliers that could've been used during that time?
That's a fair question. So we did go with a cedar fence. It's the one that you can see if you're driving by on East Street, it's a privacy fence along the parking area. It's a, it's like 100 feet of fence. Uh, we consulted with the neighbors, and that was their preference, was a cedar fence. It's a little bit more durable, uh, for future maintenance purposes, but the cost would've been the same. The, the cost differential between the cedar fence and vinyl was pretty similar, so it was kinda coming down to our discussions with the neighbor. Um, initially, it was not supposed to be a big issue, it was, it was baked into the project, and then it just became a supply chain issue at the end.
Does that answer your question, JP?
I believe it does. Thank you.
Any other questions from any counselor in the room? Or on TV? Connie?
No, it makes sense.
You need chicken soup, it looks like.
I do.
Okay, uh, I'll take a motion to approve a CPA request for $65,202 to come from the CPA Reserve Fund and the CPA Undesignated Fund for $65,202 for Mounton North Trailhead Park additional funds to cover construction costs.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
We have two motions approved in two seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Counselor Denham?
Aye, aye.
Counselor Peak?
Aye, aye.
That's where he says aye. All right. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
John, you're here right on time.
Yes, I am.
I'm gonna share my, oh, wrong thing to do, hold on. Share your budget for the pool. Wrong one, Dan. So, pool project is $1,203,000. The CPA committee approved 190, which is what's before the council committee tonight. We just received the park grant request right here. And, uh, John, why don't you take it away and explain what this particular $1,203,000 is going to pay for, although this is pretty obviously on the sheet here. And maybe go over the construction timeline.
Sure. Um, so the, we did receive the $400,000 park grant, um, so that, um, has been approved by the state, which is good news. The funding here for this year, um, goes towards design costs. You can only spend, the first year of the park rate, you can only use for design costs. So we will use that funding towards the design cost, um, and then move forward with the pool project, which is going to, as you can see, fencing, redoing, um, the concrete, trying to put pervious, um, pavement down instead, um, rain garden, some walkways, uh, shade structures, very important, upgrading the, the skimmers, the filter, um, the motor, those types of things for the pool itself. Putting a pool liner in, um, one of the things the consultant agreed was, was our concrete for as old as that, pool is, that concrete is in very good shape, structurally sound, so going with a membrane surface, so similar to what a pool, um, liner would be for, um, a household, just times it by, you know, three to five times stronger than something like that, with a 20 to 30-year warranty, um, for that product, so, uh, we feel comfortable with that as well. So, that will, um, be done next year, probably, we're looking at the fall, right after the pool closes for the season next year, we'll look at construction. Um, also coming up is the Land Water Conservation Fund, which, um, we are going to go after, which we're gonna, um, apply for 310 or so thousand dollars, um, and that's a federal grant program that's administered through the state, um, and that usually comes out at the end of October, beginning of November, um, and the deadline for applications is in mid-January, and we should hear, um, you know, in the springtime regarding that, that funding before we go to construction.
Okay, I think I asked this at the CPA, or a member did. Any ADA compliance that you have to do with this?
Yeah, so we'll have ADA, um, we're gonna add a few ADA playground structures, um, and the walkway over to that, um, playground that's down there. Um, the pool itself, um, we do already have, um, an ADA accessible seating, um, that gets folks in and out of the pool, so we already meet that standard there.
Okay. Very good. Uh, mayor, $613,105. Since you're here, that, is that gonna come before the council, you know, this year sometime, I assume?
Yeah, once free cash is certified, the appropriation will move forward.
Okay. Excellent. Um, okay, this sounds great. Uh, any questions from any counselor?
I have a question.
Hi.
And this is just related to the park grant that just happened, so, uh, I'm, I'm new to this kind of park grant thing, so, if, if we're late again finishing the project, does that mean we're gonna lose funding?
That's a good question. They give you a deadline.
And do we have to prepare for that?
We have to complete construction by the end of, almost two years from now, so, this past July 1st, um, two years from that. So, um, we have, that's, but they, they only give you a year for construction, um, that's why getting design, um, going right away, um, and getting, um, construction lined up for immediately after the pool is, um, closed down, gives us a good window in the fall, um, and plenty of time, um, in the spring as well. Um, I would imagine the contractor, for these types of projects, um, would rather get it in the fall than the spring when they're busy doing regular installations and things like that.
So we'll get all of the materials and everything ordered way done, so there's not a supply chain backup?
Yeah, that's, that's, that would definitely, absolutely be the plan. We've, uh, we've checked all the boxes, um, this is not our first park grant, um, so we've, we've hit the deadlines previously, so, um, getting, getting, um, everything in order, I think we'll, we're gonna be comfortable on that.
This has to go out to bid, though, in the spring, right? Or earlier?
Yeah, so this will go out to bid, um, after the designs are done, yeah. So we, we'd be, we'd be looking to bid this and get it out for construction, start construction in fall, this time next year. We, we, we wanna have shovels and ground, we're, we're moving forward.
Just going to Connie's question, it was mine too, but I don't believe you'll have the same supply chain issues. Let's hope not, that Jeff had. So, obviously, if there's anything that can be done ahead of time, that would be great. I suspect you'll hit your deadline, because this is new information. I didn't know they were so strict, so...
Yeah, they're very strict on their deadlines.
Any other, Tom?
Well, actually, Counselor Riss, uh, on the last item, you said that the CPA committee approved it unanimously. Is that also the case for this one?
Yes. When I say unanimously, there was eight members there, but all eight of them voted. I think in the documents, you'll see that, Jamie wrote that up.
Sure.
All of them will tell you exactly how many members voted.
Fine, okay, thank you.
There was no negative. And the other thing the CPA did, just so you know how important we found this project, we laid no restriction on the appropriation. If the park grant didn't come in, this was still going to be appropriated and, in hopes that we could find the money elsewhere. We wanted this done. And usually, we tie CPA grants to other grants coming in. This time, we didn't. We felt it was so necessary. So thank God you got the park grant. Good work.
Yeah, it was one day after our meeting for CPA.
Yes. Uh, any other questions? Counselor Gomez, Counselor, Counselor Pazinski, any questions?
Yeah. I think this, this, this project is absolutely critical for our community. Uh, I think it helps to, to get equitable pool availability across the community, and that's just very important for everybody. Not everyone has a pool in their backyard or has a backyard, so this enables everyone to share in that pool. We have some questions about, about the financing, and I'm thrilled about the park grant, let me say that first. And, uh, it just was, I noticed the city had a municipal $600,000 contribution and the CPA under $200,000. Is there a reason or requirement for that? And is it adjustable in any way?
The park grant requires a match, doesn't it? Usually?
Whether the match, whether the match be, uh, the municipal side or the CPA side?
Either, I think, but, city has to provide funds to get the grant. Am I correct on that, Jeff? When you go apply for those, right?
Yeah, I'd be curious, yeah, John, do you wanna answer that first and see if you can answer it?
Yeah, so, the CPA number is based on the, the formula percentage that you do with park grant, so there has to be a certain amount acquired from that. The municipal amount is a number out there if we do not receive any further grants, but you have to, when you submit this project, we have to submit it as a whole with appropriations, potential appropriations, where they come from. So, we submit it with that, with just like the $400,000 that we hope from the park grant, you submit the whole number, and then now we start looking to chip away with grants and other things that can offset the municipals', um, number that they're gonna have, that we get, we get from, from the, the city. Now, as far as we, if, if it's not free cash, or we do get that 300 and change from the, uh, the Land Water Conservation Fund, and we look at, um, CPA wants to do the other 300, whatever it is, whether it's, you know, free cash, CPA, or whatever, there is gonna be another number out there, um, that, um, we're gonna be seeking. The other thing is, for a project like this, when you submit, the city has to take on, it's a reimbursement grant, so the city has to take on the total cost, um, and they have to approve that they're gonna be in for the 1.2, um, and then you go from there. So that's, that's kinda the timing of that.
And that's usual park grants, have to pay them ahead of time. Does that answer your question, JP?
Sure, I guess ideally, that, that, that 600,000 that's listed as a municipal contribution would be whittled away at, and it would be hopefully more in line with the amount that the CPA contributes to the project. Does that sound right?
We're hoping to whittle that down to about 315 for municipal.
Okay.
There's no, there's no...
At that, at that, I don't have a question, and I'm not, haven't been following exactly what the CPA has been spending and needing for all the categories, but I know that that was a source of funds that, uh, I, I would rather see used, and I think most people would rather see used than direct municipal funds.
Well, I disagree. There's a lot of places for the CPA funds. If there is free cash and the mayor's willing to do that, I feel, 'cause the CPA has a limited amount of money, we have a lot of things coming forward that, that are coming within the year, maybe. Um, I think we would do that had there not been any other source of funds. Currently, there is no appropriation before the CPA committee for additional funds for this project, though, so you know. But, we'll see, we'll see what happens. Tom?
I just wanna point, this is interesting, but, like, any future appropriation is not currently on our agenda.
That's true.
And, um...
Well, the budget is, though, so...
Well, sure, yeah, that's true. The budget is there, I think it's valid to ask questions about it, but, um, I, I don't know whether, how deeply we should go into deliberating on that, given that, first of all, the amount may change, and like, there might be a valid conversation to be had there, but that's not the item that's on our agenda that we told the public we were gonna be discussing tonight.
As part of the budget, there has to be more money given to this, in municipal side, as either CPA or the city side, so that's, that's fair. Does that answer all your questions, JP?
Thank you.
Okay. Connie, anything on this? Yeah, I think you asked already. Very good points about the... Omar, anything? And I'll take a, uh, a motion to approve a CPA request for $190,000 to be funded from open space in the Reserve Fund, $190,000, to go to the Non-Ituk Pool Restoration Construction account.
Second, or sorry, so moved.
Say second, Connie, but turn your mic on first.
Second.
Uh, we have a motion on, and a second, do we have any further discussion? Hearing none. Connie?
Aye.
Aye.
And Riss says aye. Okay, next on the agenda, Hadal, I am gonna get to your report, but I wanna talk about the, what I put forward. JP, I didn't send it to you, I'm gonna share the screen, just give me a second. I've come up with a figure that I can support, it's just me, I'm one vote. I feel strongly that a 50% increase in the salary is pretty high, and that's as far as I can go. I know there's talk about 7,000, that's a 75% increase. As far as the school committee is, I would duplicate the $2,000 per member increase, but that's a 100% increase in their salary. That, my opinion, given inflation, given the taxpayers, given the, what they have to pay right now, um, given the state of the economy, I think it's a hard sell now at 50%. But this is my opinion, and I just wanted to bring it forward. If people wanna go higher, okay. I can't support higher than 50% for the council salary for the next term. That's just me. In fact, if people reduced it, I'd vote for that too. But that's why I put this together, 'cause I'd like to end this. We have a deadline of December 31st. We could still talk about committees, but that's not what we're gonna talk about tonight. The increase to the budget is 32,000, if I did my math right, and I, please check me just here, I'll give you this, check my math. So, I open the floor. I wanted to start with something, and I wanted to start by saying, "What do I wanna do?", and that's just me, okay? I hear Counselor Gomez's opinion of 7,000 being something that might attract a lot more people to the council. Counselor Zarek came down, if you saw that email that he sent, he came down from 10,000 to 7,500, that's almost 90%. Boston City Council just recently put in for a 20% increase, and that's being poo-pooed. For them, it's like, 125,000, they're full terms. I also think the data that Counselor Zarek put forward is a little bit misleading, because those cities have huge budgets compared to our small city. So, that's where I'm at. You could probably convince me, but I don't think I'd budge off of 50% right now. Counselor Peak?
So, I mean, there's two things here. Well, and I, and I wanna say that I, I don't, like, I don't feel very, very strongly about this, so these are all, like, anything I'm saying right now, like, is just kinda theoretical. The reason is, for me, actually, I think the, the bigger priority that I have right now, um, personally, is parity between the council salaries and the school committee salaries. I'm just, just given the, what the last couple of years have looked like for them, it just seems like, I, I don't, I understand that any raise to bring them up is gonna be a large raise in terms of percentage, and I do understand that, and I, but I also just continue to be kind of uncomfortable with the idea that the council makes this and the school committee makes this, when they're both kind of a lot of work, you know? I don't, I don't personally feel like I work a lot harder than the school committee members. Maybe I'm wrong. I don't super, I mean, I, I, a lot of our meetings are at the same time, so I'm not, so that's, that's one thing that I, I wanted to say. And, and on the same note, I think, um, you know, it is true that we are a smaller city with a smaller budget. But, you know, I think that's, that's also true for, you know, out, for everyone in the city, right? Like, people in, like, in these, like, do all of our employees, do our, our salaried employees, for example, like, across the board make 60% what they would make in West Springfield, because if not, then, you know, I mean, yes, we're a smaller city with, we're a smaller budget, we've gotta figure those things out, and that can be difficult at times. But at the same time, like, I do think that there has to be a certain level of, of, of just compensation for work, and I think some of us do work very hard, and I think that... I mean, I think we all work very hard in our own unique ways, you know? We, what, what work looks like for us is different based on what committees you're on and whatever, but like, it's, you know, it's, it's tough work, and I also do think the, the point that Counselor Gomez had made, um, about that if we pay, if we have more money, that might help some, like, a more diverse group... we have more money, that might help some, like, a more diverse group of people to engage with this process, simply because covering childcare expenses, for instance, it would be easier. I also think that there's something there. That's, I've got no problem personally with the 6,500, but...
6,000.
Sorry, 6,000, whatever it's going to be. I don't really have an issue with 6,000. I don't really have an issue with 7,000. I do think there should be a raise, but I do think that personally, the more important thing is that whatever we raise the council salaries to, we should correct what, in my opinion, is a sort of long-running error and pay our school committee members the same amount, unless you truly believe that it's not the same level, like, the same commitment in terms of service, which, I mean, I, again, I don't, I don't exactly know, but I think that it's comparable.
I have things to say about that, but I want to...
Sorry, there was a bunch of stuff.
Connie, do you have anything?
Um, yeah, I guess, what I'm thinking right now is, what is the priority? Do we want to have parity between the school committee and city council? I think, like, Council Pete, I'm not, I don't know if the workload is the same, right? And if the priority is to have equity, then I would say drop city council to five and raise that to five, right? If that's the priority. If the priority is to try to diversify the council, then I think that we should consider six or 6,500. I know President Gomez has said seven, like, I don't know what the number is to make it so that more people show up. I will say that, I don't know that it's going to make more people show up. Right now, we have a council of one woman and eight men, the majority of whom are white. So are more white people just going to run for city council to join? And if that's the case, then we completely missed the mark, right? And so, because I know that there's people who are interested in city governance, right? But being a part of city council is not necessarily something that they want, right? For a variety of different reasons. They might feel bullied, or they might feel targeted with the community for speaking out, and so I think there's just a lot of, I think, I think we're making some assumptions. And if we're wrong about our assumptions, then we're just reinforcing the system that we currently have. So that's my perspective right now, at this moment.
Council Kozinski or Council Gomez? Who wants to talk first? Omar?
I think I will disagree with a few things. Start saying the, and I think it's really important for the school committee to get more money, right? But when we start talking about, and when we say that we don't know what they do, and then we want to be equal, like, part of it...
Parity.
Parity with them, so I think we are just throwing stuff without knowing it, right? We should bring the school committee here and ask them what they do. We should have a better idea of what they do to decide that we're going to pay them the same way that we pay the city council. We can't talk about the city council, because we know what we do, right? When we talk about all the cities, we have to know that all the cities pay health insurance, and they have staff to work with the city council. We don't have that. The same way that we can assume that more people can come to serve as a diversity group, more diverse, by the way, eight of those males, one is Latino, could be more diverse. Extra money will help for some people of my color to step up and serve in the community. Money, money is, it's something important for, for people. I'm not, I'm not telling the people should be running for the money, because 7,000, 6,000, it's not going to break your bank. That, that's true. But definitely, people who work three jobs, they're interested to participate as a counselor. $4,000, it's not going to help. Maybe 7,000, 6,000 help to pay the daycare, not having the third job and participate, and be the voice for the Latinos, or the Blacks, or the Asians, or the LGBTQ, be part of the community, and we can be more attractive for them. You know what, for me, I'm in. Six, 65 or 7,000, I'm in. But I think that we have to put everything on the table. When we talk about all the cities, I agree. The budget is higher, the workload probably is more, but they have eight, they have health insurance. We don't have any of that. We do everything ourselves. Again, I'm not asking to increase it for the next council, that I'm not going to be, I don't know if I'm going to be there as a counselor. I'm asking for the future, right? And we have to think that the, the future, we, we're more open to bring other people. But I, I believe that the school committee should have, should get more money. I'm not the expert to say how much, because I've never been a school committee member, and I don't know how much they work. I know they work a lot. I'm not saying that they don't work. But I cannot compare our job to their job, because, I don't know.
Before I respond, JP, you're on the call. Do you want to say anything about all this?
Sure. Well, I think you know my position with regard to health insurance, and I've been saying that for the last 15 years, that other communities pay the health insurance, and that benefit alone can be worth up to like $17,000 a year. And, and in those communities, they also have additional staff. So those two reasons alone give pause to the person who is thinking of running and has to go ahead and balance their own personal budget, and maybe pay for childcare, and take away from other things that they, that they, they could be doing. I think we all do this because we love the community, we love what we do, and I hope that other people in the future will continue to do so. But the incentive to do so with additional pay is, I think, very important, and I would, I would deem necessary. It's time. It's been many, many years. I would support the $7,000 at this time. When you asked about the question, what, what school committee does, I happen to be in a unique position. I see it. I see the calls that come in from other school committee members. I see the calls that come in from constituents. I see the back and forth with administrators in the various areas of school. School committee members work very hard. My, my wife wasn't always the chair.
Point of information, please. And I believe that Council Kozinski should not be speaking to the matter, because he has a financial interest, because his wife is the chair of the school committee.
That's a point.
And I would like an ethics opinion on that, so the counselor has a clear way forward of how to, how to weigh in on this, because it is a financial, it is a financial consideration under the city council purview. And I would also cite city counselor, the city council president, Omar Gomez, who also recuses for anything because his wife is an employee of the school district, the chair of the school district, I mean, the chair of the school committee, as with every elected official is a special employee of the city.
So basically, JP, I think the mayor is correct. You can talk to the council salary, but you can't talk to the school committee salary. But you might want to get an ethics opinion. Let me finish.
I would like to, I would like to have an opportunity to respond, if I may.
Point of information, it's ethics, it's not my opinion. I'm asking for it as the mayor of the city, and once we get a written ethics opinion from the state, that clarifies what the counselor can speak to on this issue. I don't think it is a debate between myself and a counselor. It is a call for an ethics opinion.
I would disagree, and I think there's important points that need to be made at this time.
But I'm sorry, I don't agree with you, JP. I think the mayor makes a great point, because you're married to a school committee member who will benefit salary-wise from your opinion on the matter.
That is exactly my point. None of us are talking about the terms for which we were elected. You, Council Gomez, Council Denham, and Council Pete. This is for a future council and for a future school committee. So it has absolutely nothing to do with our salaries or what any of us might gain or not gain.
He has a point. But I still, I still feel, given that point, you may have the authority or the right to speak to this, but I would like an ethics opinion on it, just to protect yourself and your wife. I mean, that's not so hard. This, this has to be put before the council if we vote on a number tonight. This has to be put before the council in two weeks. You should be able to get an ethics opinion on whether you could speak to it.
I'm not voting on this tonight.
All I'm saying is, you need to get that, just to be safe, okay? It's not hard.
I have no problems asking again on this subject. When I did ask the last time, I was told that anything that happens in the future is for the future.
Do you have...
And would have to be elected.
Point of information?
Yes?
The counselor will be voting on next fiscal year's budget, and with his comments or wanting to comment without a written ethics opinion, not just verbal between him and ethics, there is no guarantee that the counselor or his wife, the school, or the chair committee won't run again. And both great public servants, this is not about either a counselor or a chair, this is about the state ethics committee, which clearly indicates this. And, and may I say, in two, in two situations, as in myself, as in a butter, of an a butter of a public park project, I was to refuse myself by the state ethics committee, as well as I am the owner of a C corporation that owns an LLC that has a legal license I don't manage, and I got a seven-page ethics opinion. Chief Alberti has an ethics opinion. I don't think this is out of, I don't think this is out of the ordinary.
No, it's not. It really isn't, JP. So I'm going to have to ask you not to speak to this until you get the ethics report. I think that's fair, okay? And your vote, when it happens, will happen if we do put this before a public hearing. We can delay that. I have till December 31st. So try to get the ethics opinion before you speak to this again, okay?
I'm happy to get any ethics opinion on the subject.
I appreciate it. Okay. I have, can I speak to all these subjects before I come back?
Sure.
First of all, with regard to parity, I don't agree, only because, and I, it's not that I don't think, the school committee works really hard, there's no doubt about it. But I believe we're all paid, we're all work hard for the responsibility we have. City council's responsibility to write the law, to pass a budget, a $50 million budget, something like that, including the school committee's budget. These are responsibilities that don't mean, that mean we are not equal to the school committee. We have, it's a bureaucracy, and we have a level above them. Now, given their workload, I am suggesting 100% increase in their salary. That's a huge increase. And I have to tell everybody, after, when we had the budget discussions, percentages is what people were talking about. I'd rather look at the money, because the percentage of the school committee's budget at 8% is $1.8 million, whether 8% of DPW's budget is what, a couple hundred thousand? It's money. But the citizens look at, they're, they're giving themselves, even though there's another election, a 50% raise. They're giving the school department 100% raise. You want to sell 7,000, which is 75%. Is there any water anywhere? If you want to sell 75%, okay, I can't do that. And I can say, say that whether or not I am a counselor again, it's up in the air, and it's nothing to do with the money. I've always served, because I'm a public servant. But parity to me doesn't work because of responsibility. It doesn't mean that the school committee doesn't deserve a huge raise, and I think 100% is a pretty damn good raise, because it does recognize the work that they do. But we have to remember also, thank you. We have to recognize the difference in the two positions. A city counselor has a hell of a lot more authority over everybody's departments, and we write law. So that's where I am on that. I, I mean, we could, you could change this, but it would be a massive increase or a decrease in the salary of the council, which I think should be, which defeats the purpose that Council Gomez has to do. So I can't agree with the parity, but I do agree that they work hard, and I think 100,000 is 100,000. Tom was first.
I know, but just for the record, I'm not attached to the 7,000. It can go lower.
I know, that's fine. Tommy, you were going to speak.
I just was saying, in the context, I don't want to get too bogged down in this, but in the context of the conversation that we just had about conflict of interest, should we be doing anything special to talk about our own, like, we're talking about our own, like, we have potentially, if we choose to run again, a direct financial...
Yeah, but every council has to vote on this, it doesn't matter. It has for like 20 years, like 26 years. It is, it's also in the charter that we have to do this. So it's not, it's not a conflict of interest. And secondly, JP does make the point, it's the next council, which is why the charter did that specifically, and you have to do it by the first year. So there's a year for people to decide. Anything else, Connie, on this? If you're still awake there?
No, I'm awake. I'm taking it all in. Um, yeah, I, again, I just, I want to go back to, what are we, what are we looking for? Like, what is our goal, right? And I, I think, for me, that's where the conversation is, right? Like, are we saying that, I hear Counselor is saying, well, I think that parity is not the issue. I don't know how I feel about that. Like, I feel, I feel like work is work, and time is time, and people, commitment is commitment, right? And I don't necessarily think there's a hierarchy in that. That's my personal opinion, just like I don't agree with, because the city clerk makes X amount of money, we have to make X amount more. Like, I don't, I don't necessarily agree with that. I think we're all kind of engaged in the work of the city. And, and I do, you know, from a personal place, right, I would like to see more diversity on city council. I would like to see more engagement, more diversity of thought within this space. And I think it's about, what is our goal? What are we trying to achieve? And so, for me, I think that's a part of the conversation for me, right? That I, I think we're kind of dancing around, and I think if we're able to say, this is what we want to see, then it makes it easier for me to say, I can get on board with that, or this is how far on board I am, and this is how far, or I'm not on board with that, right? But I think we're, we're throwing out numbers to pick, pick the right thing, but for me, I think, what are we trying to achieve? Because that, for me, is going to drag my decision.
That's a good point. But to your point you made earlier, there's, it might attract white men, because we raise the salary. I mean, you don't know.
Exactly, right? And so I think, whatever is...
That would be terrible.
Yeah, whatever is...
What are you saying, Omar? I mean, it could.
I don't know. I don't know the answer. I would like for...
But if we use the same logic, why we increase the mayor's salary, they can attract white males, too. So if we're going to always thinking about, okay, we're not going to increase it, because you're going to attract white male, too, white males working in something, it's, it's a risk that we have to play, right?
That's a good point.
I think it's a risk that we have to play. And we have to, I think, what is the goal? The goal is making the city council more attractive for the people who will, maybe 6,000 will make the difference, right?
And I struggled with that. When I suggested 6...
6,000?
I said, well, it's a, it's 50%. Just a second time. It's 50%, and I said, this is a compromise. 6,000's a compromise. It's not all the way to seven, but it's, it's a compromise for me, so...
And what is the goal? I think the goal is simple. If someone who's not making $100,000 a year, 6,000 is not going to be attractive. That's, that's the reality. But if you have a Latino, like me, making 50,000 a year, instead of finding another job of $10,000, I can add, I can be productive for my community, because the 6,000 or 7,000 would be attractive to not having the second job, but now, I'm going to give my expertise, my point of view, to the city to make it more diverse and more, in my eyes, than being a Latino. That's the point. We're not going to change the people, who's going to... We're not gonna change the people who's gonna get $100,000. 6,000, 7,000, 10,000 is gonna be the same. We live in a community that 90% is white. We're gonna, we're gonna have that risk, that only white people is gonna run for city council. It's a possibility. By percentage, it's a possibility the only candidate that's gonna run next time for the council is gonna be all white. It's a huge possibility. But if we make the council more attractive for the diversity group out there, again, I'm in.
I don't wanna make it less than 6, I don't, so, I don't know. Tom?
I just wanna say that, you know, when we're talking about sort of diversity on the council, you know, it's important to talk about race, it's important to talk about gender, it's important to talk about sexual orientation, but it's also important to talk about class, you know?
Yeah, low income.
And there are a lot of people who could be white males or white women, who are people who work in the city in...
Who need affordable housing and work in the service industry.
Right. They work in the service industry, and, or they work in manufacturing, and they see a whole different side, the way things happen in East Hampton, and they affect them in a very different way than, I mean, even, like, the last few years have been okay for me, but like, when I started on the city council, I can say I was, like, compared to, like, going over to even other councillors' houses, I was like, oh, I am in a different strata than most of the folks here, in terms of, yeah, just in terms of, you know, life. And for me, I'm, you know, I'm younger, so that's okay, 'cause I'm working a professional job that does this sort of mobility, but a lot of people don't have that mobility, right? They started a low wage and they stay at a low wage. And so, I just think that, and I, and would those people not run at 4,000 and would they run at 6,000? I don't know, maybe. This is a big thing in economics, right, is these sort of marginal decisions, where there's a lot of things that go into this, and that's, you know, the compensation's one of them, and then other things are there. I don't know whether it'll, whether or not these things would attract, like, I can't say for sure whether a pay increase of $2,000, or $3,000, or $6,000 will necessarily attract this person or that person, but what I can say is, for those people who are on the council, who might be in a life position where it's demanding of them, young parents, you know, extra money will help. Will that make them run? I don't know. If they do run, having that extra compensation will...
I don't, okay.
And I'm not arguing with you, I'm just, you know, when we're talking, because Connie asked the excellent question of, what are we actually hoping to accomplish here? I think that part of what we're hoping to accomplish here is to set a council stipend. I'm just, I'm sort of freewheeling here, so I hope this makes sense, like, to set a council stipend that could actually, like, be commensurate for the sacrifices that folks are asked to make on the city council. Personally, I am asked to make very few sacrifices on the city council, I am a unmarried person with no kids, like, I don't, I'd probably just be watching TV if I wasn't here, but for some people, they really have to go out of their way to figure out what they're doing with their kids, with whatever, and I do think an increased salary stipend makes that, just by necessity, easier. Does it cover the whole of the sacrifice? Probably not, but probably makes it a little bit easier, and I think that that's, that to me is the real thing.
My response is, yes, we must increase the salary.
Yeah.
Yes, it will help to attract diversity, perhaps. How much is that increase? Because the other side of the coin, which I struggle with, is what are the taxpayers gonna say when they hear us 50%, 100% for the school committee? It's a tough sell. And if we're running again, you gave yourselves, so you could get, you know, you're gonna get the crap. So, I'm just saying that only because we have to answer to them.
Sure.
So, this is where I came up with. Now, Connie, take your question and then, or your statement, and then I'd like to find a way where we're gonna go. We don't have to settle this tonight, but I kinda wanted to, but we don't have to. Connie?
So, I think this is my point about asking, why are we doing what we're doing? Because I think there's a, there's a next step to that, and that is us promoting and talking about and putting out within the community that this is what we're looking for within the community, right? And so, then that becomes easier to, you used the word "sell," right? Sell to taxpayers about what we're trying to accomplish, right? Because if we're just throwing out numbers, then that becomes a much more difficult thing for me to swallow, right? But if we're saying that this is our goal and this is our aim, and we're very intentional about saying, we're trying to recruit a more diverse...
Well, that is our selling...
City council, right? Members from the city council, and whatever that is, class, race, gender, sexual orientation, on and on and on. But I think our work doesn't stop at voting on this particular number, right? There, we have to do more work in terms of trying to recruit those people, or people, right, I'm not gonna say those people, but people, right, to make up what this organization looks like, right? And so, I think that there's more work to be done on our part, regardless of whether it's 6, or 7, or 10, or, I mean, obviously that's very extreme to me, but I think it's about stating what our goal is and then putting in action steps to be able to accomplish that. Otherwise, it was all for nothing.
I think that's an excellent point, because when we sell this to the taxpayers, we have to sell, we want to attract a diversity on the council, we think this'll do it, there's plenty of people that make over 100,000, we wanna attract people that want to serve, but really can't afford it. That's a fair statement, right? I think that's an excellent point. Where do we wanna go with this? Do we wanna put this off to vote on some figure? I mean, I threw this out, because we gotta do something before December 31st, and I do not want to wait until then to vote on it.
I agree on that part. I think that, one way or another, like, I don't like things being, like, whenever we try and do something at the last minute, it gets messy. So, I do think we need to move on this soon. If there were like, I mean, and personally, I can live with these numbers. I mean, I, I do think, like, you know, if, if this got to the, just to be transparent, if this got to the council and somebody wanted to raise the school committee up to the city council, I probably would vote yes on that. But I also, like, appreciate that you put some work into this, and I don't, like, I think that if this is, after several terms of no movement on this, if this is where we landed, I think that that's progress.
It's a major, it's a major increase, given by history on the council. We did 1,000 here, 1,500 there. When we raised it to 4,000, that was considered huge, and that, I think that was 1,500, maybe? I don't remember. But that was considered huge. So, selling it the way Connie's brought it up is good. I'd like you to stick with this, and then we'll see where it goes. People are gonna make amendments, maybe they're gonna wanna increase it.
Sure. I guess my point is that, like, you know, I'm, like, I, I'm trying to, like, I really agree with what Connie's saying about trying to sort of wrap our heads around, like, building a framework here, but at the same time, A, I'm not sure I know right now, off the top of my head, like, how best, like, what the next step in that right now, that we could resolve right now would be. And then the other point is, we are running a little bit low on time, so I would be okay voting on this with the understanding that I do expect this conversation to continue to evolve.
Well, I'll put it forward to the full council, I'll make a public hearing for it, and then we'll see what happens. I mean, Mayor, did you wanna say something? You look like you do.
I do.
Okay, go for it.
So just to step back, and, and, I mean, all good points, and councillor Denham's point about the why is, is right on the nose for me. I think about the number of women on the council, including one who midterm stepped down, and I think that there's a conversation to be had there. What I would, when I think about, like, school committee versus city council, I agree with you, Chair, that the responsibilities are different, the amount of work by both bodies is amazing. I would suggest, just to put out there, it is more of a policy rather than just this kind of a conversation, something like the rate of inflation averaged in the last two years of the term, plus a cost of living increase of 2.5% or 3%, similar to what we do with pay plan. But I do think that inflation has to be a part of it, well, especially now, but, and then, that is made, that package is put forward to apply to the school committee or not, I mean, I'm just suggesting some kind of a best practice policy that this council, but future councils will play, okay, this was suggested, we've kind of done this, but, I don't know, we really need to up it, or whatnot, but I, I mean, maybe that, that could be a little step forward while there's larger conversation about the why. So I just put that forward, I'm happy to...
You mean, write that into the ordinance or something?
I would say best practice. So, I would, happy to put a short memo together, just with my opinion, to make it a little more objective, that the council, like, I'm asking the council to, you know, best practice, my suggestion or my two cents is an average of inflation after the, of the last term, right, so this term, plus a general adjustment, like we do with pay plan, if there's money, then, you know, it's 2%, it's 1.5%, it's 3%. Just, so, I mean, I think councillor Denham and President Gomez have a very good point. People work really hard. No one's becoming a city councillor or a school committee member to, you know, it's not hitting the lottery. But there, I think, factors, you know, the why for me, money is a part of it, but a deep dive would be very interesting.
It sounds like that's additional reason, the inflation and everything, is additional reason for council to consider selling this, beyond just the diversity hope. Okay. Shall we put forward, recommend these two, my suggestions to the full council this evening? Councillors, what do you think? Should we vote on this this evening? Councillor Denham, Councillor Peak?
I don't have any objection with voting on it. I mean, unless, this would be the one difference, is if there, if there was, like, a strong sense that what we really should be doing is looking at it in a different way, pulling in more information, pulling in a different perspective, like, if there was a sense that there's some work that we really should, and I kinda like vaguely feel like if I had been, if this had been the main thing on my mind for, you know, the last few years, I would have, like, a process that would make more sense. Absent that, I don't mind bringing this forward, like, I don't, I don't have an objection on if we're voting on this tonight, personally.
And more research still boils down to, what's the figure? How much do we wanna do? And, you know, it makes it easier for me to suggest 7, if we really sell the diversity, but on the other hand, what are people gonna hear? They're gonna hear 75%? I mean, if it's 7. So, I don't know. Connie, did we vote on this this evening?
Um, you know, we have until...
We're just gonna go on with this all again, though.
And I think the question for me is, if we do that, then what's the number, again, going back to the goal, if it is to diversify this council, then what is the number that's gonna convince people to do that? Right? And I...
10,000.
Huh?
10,000.
Well, I don't know if it's that much, right? But I think that's gonna provide us more clarity of, like, do I wanna say 7, if it's gonna push more people up the top, or am I okay with 6, because that's what the voters are gonna be okay with?
Well, all I'm saying is, we can go back and forth on this a long time. Tom?
If we really wanted to do this the right way, in my opinion, we would probably be, and I'm not suggesting we do this, I just wanna suggest this, like, like, I think that these are, the questions that are being asked, what is the number that would make this more attractive, that sort of thing? Those are questions that get answered by, like, professionals, right? You'd hire a firm to do survey research and talk to people about, would you ever, does the city council seem like something that would ever be attractive to you at all? Because for some people, you could pay them a million dollars, they wouldn't do this, you know? And then the question is, what's holding you back? Is it economics? And if it is economics, what's, you know, what would it, you know, you would actually have to, you'd do focus groups and survey research, and...
We don't have time for that.
We don't have time for that. Like, I mean, we don't, like, maybe we should in the future, but like, just between now, we probably barely have time to figure out where we'd find that money and, and put that out for bid, you know? So like, I just, I mean, I just, that, that's, I guess, my thought. And I mean, and if someone disagrees with me on this, like, then, and has, like, an idea for a thing we can do to figure out, to put it in councillor Denham's terms, like, what is that number? Like, if somebody has a way that we, as the finance committee, can determine that number, a method for doing so, then like, I'm totally all in. That sounds awesome, that's the kind of stuff I like doing.
Well, that's a conversation we could have had a few months ago.
Yeah, absent that...
Which, maybe that's my fault as Chair, but given the history of how we've proceeded with this, when I started this out, I figured, oh, we'll probably go up a grand, maybe 1,500. Now we're up a lot. So, Omar, you wanna say? I wanna conclude this, though, tonight, so, Omar, or conclude the conversation.
Again, I'm okay with the 6,000, but I'm gonna talk a little bit about my perspective. I'm being Latino, being poor. Why 6, 7,000 is the number? If I have my job, and I decide to coach two teams at the high school level, that is kinda part-time, I'm gonna give them extra money, the number's gonna be between 6 to 7,000. It's gonna be 3, 35, 3400 for one sport, 30 something for the other sport, 6,700. When you have to deal with that, the experts are always good, but the reality is, ask the people. When you find another job, or part-time, you're looking for 6, 7, 8,000, 10,000 extra money to bring home. That's, that's the normal people. If we get out, talk to the normal people out there, you're gonna find out, that's the number. Again, I'm not saying the expert are another expert, and we should have experts, but it's gonna cost us time and money to find the experts, but it's a lot of people out there telling you how much is having extra money there. And going back again, for that person who can be coaching two teams, instead of being coaching two teams, that person wanna be a city councillor, now they're gonna think about it. It's two teams that are gonna coach to bring extra money, are gonna serve to the community and another aspect as a city council. 6, 7,000, that's, that's the number.
I have a thought.
Some people want 10,000, and who, who doesn't want 10,000? But I guess the numbers are there, it's, it's just a matter of making the question to the right people who need the extra money.
I have a thought on practicality. We vote on this, we put it for a public hearing, let's say it's the first meeting in November. We continue the public hearing after we hear feedback, and we do the actual vote, the second meeting in November, 'cause that gives the public a chance to look at. In the meantime, this figure can be looked at by all of you again and amended. I put this forward as my stopgap, but as anybody will tell you, I can be persuaded, 'cause I hear what you're saying, 7,000, okay. I know we'll get pushback from the normal Joe who says, you're gonna give yourself a 50% increase when I can't barely make ends meet? I mean, that's gonna come out there. So we have to be prepared for that. And our pushback is, we want to diversify the council, and people who make less money than all of us need extra part-time jobs, and this is a figure that might make them work for the city as a city councillor, rather than take that coaching job. That's a selling point. So, I'd like to do this 6,000 tonight, because then we can put it for a public hearing, get public feedback, and then if councillors wanna make amendments either way, after that feedback, what do you think? What do you guys think of that? I think that's a practical way to do it. Connie, does that work for you?
Yeah, can I just ask one question? I'm not trying to be difficult, because I like the idea of that. I think it's easier to go down than it is to go up, so why don't we start at 7, and then get feedback, and then we can always go back down to 6? That's just my personal opinion.
I think it's easier, it's easier to go either way.
Then that's, if that's, if you all think that way, then, then I'm happy to go along with that. I'm just asking the question...
I would like to, I've heard Councillor Gomez say that 6 is okay with him, I'd like to stay at 6, 'cause I'm okay with that. If all the councillors come forward at the public hearing and say, look, we need to go to 7, I'll vote in favor. to 7, I'll vote in favor. I want to hear from everybody, and I want to hear from the public. So, let's stick to 6 and then see where that goes. Because it is a 50% increase, and the school committee's is 100% increase. So, can I have a motion to approve the chair's recommendation for salary stipend increases for the school committee and the city council?
So moved.
Second.
That was real. She did second, though. Any further discussion? Hearing now, Counselor Denham?
Aye.
Counselor Peak?
Aye.
Counselor Reese says aye. I will ask Barbara to give us the two ordinances with these changes, and we'll put it before the full council for a public hearing in November. Hadal, I'm sorry I made you wait all this long. You know what? Because of the hour...
She had fun, though, I think.
Do we want to talk about, because it's not going to get any different, we want to talk about the expenses and summary of revenue next meeting?
If that's okay with everyone, I wouldn't...
Are you okay with that? Are you chomping at the bit, Hadal, to say something tonight?
You're muted.
Yeah, I'm fine with it, if you want, you guys want to hear about it next week. Numbers are going to be same, so...
They are. I have one question. Encumbrances. What does that mean?
So, what happens is, everything placed, anything, any services in...
That's what I'm going to look down. I'm sorry.
Sorry, Hadal, I think there's people out in the hall, and they have a meeting coming in. Go ahead. What is incumbents, again?
Encumbrances are this, um, the, the goods and services are placed order for, but we haven't received them by June 30th, so we hold over money from prior fiscal year into the new fiscal year, and they have till July 15 to finalize that.
Okay, good enough. All right, thank you very much. I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Back in.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor? Connie?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Thank you. Is there somebody coming in?
This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.